Park Board is not fully attended yet for a quorum.
Amy just said Roy and Dan were going to screen. Okay, are Roy and Dan on? They were going to screen.
Okay. Yeah. Dan, are you on a computer where you can share your desktop? With a webcam?
I'm not sure what you're asking. How do I share it?
Yeah, when you joined, did you join via the link on a computer?
Yes.
Okay, do you have a webcam?
I do not.
Oh, okay.
Do you need me there?
Uh, well, shoot.
Yeah. I'm only a block away.
Yeah, yeah.
Come on down.
Okay, I'll be there in a minute. Come up to the conference room.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Now, Kevin, it shows that you're...
That's Kevin and Jeff.
Yeah.
It shows that you're, I mean, it shows me a little icon like you have the capability of...
Hi, Doctor.
Doctor Woolery is here.
Doctor, take a seat. Ask him where...
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to... I got my iPad out. I'm gonna try going through that link instead.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's over here.
Kevin?
Yeah?
In the right-hand side of your screen, what do you have?
The right-hand side, I have, I have, on the very top right-hand, I have like a microphone.
Megan.
On the bottom right, there's a settings option.
All right, Megan. Do you have a little icon that looks like a projector right below the phone?
Yes, I do. It says "Screen."
Yeah, see if you can click on that. See what that does for you?
Um, nothing right now. I'm pushing it. And I can see all you guys. I can see your screens, but I can't go to my email, Taylor.
At the top of your screen where you see us, do you see everyone? Webcams, Zoom?
I see four screens right now. I see Kelvin, Jeff, uh, and then, um...
Tom and Steve Davis, probably.
Yes.
Above that?
Nobody knows.
Um, if necessary, I literally live like three minutes away. If I need to just get my car and drive up, I can social distance and sit, you know, close to somebody.
I can't hear you.
I think we're gonna need you for the quorum.
Yeah. Okay, I will... Give me five minutes to throw some clothes on, and I will be that way.
All right.
All right. You are. I don't know. It won't let me do it.
Okay, everybody, if I could get you to, if you're not...
Actually, everybody in our neighborhood is doing it. And now that you're...
Can I get everybody to mute their mics, please?
It's changed. We changed them once today. Somebody's got something different. It's kind of neat.
Jeff? Jeff, could you mute your mic?
Me?
Yeah.
I can.
I think I just muted everybody. Is that... Let's see. Let me see if I can turn Monty back on now.
What's your mic, Tom? Sure, I have it.
Yeah, they've got it.
He was good.
Make sure Mr. Thomas has his clothes on before he comes in.
Yeah.
My sign out there says, "No..." My sign there says, "No nakedness." "No nudity today."
Mr. Dawson, Ms. Foster, Mr. Woolery. Let's see. Mayor Katie.
Good afternoon.
And Councilman Cross.
Megan's upstairs.
Yeah, she went up with Oldham.
She's always like that. She does never like this particularly.
Jerry, Renee, Katie are upstairs. Tom's and other... Where's Tom? What room's he in? You put him in the corner?
In the corner.
Timeout?
He's a bad guy.
You put Tom in timeout?
Well, it's gonna be the sign that I realize that I've known you, so if I end up being a member of the public, then you're married.
Somebody just came in. Staircase. Where is the place you drop off your water?
Right outside on... There's a big blue, looks like a mailbox.
On the Kentucky side?
No, right over here.
Next to the generator.
Oh, okay.
Then will we...
Let's see.
There's a place for people to put money for me and money for you.
Do I usually get the mail in here?
And without a food, with Tom and Nick.
Okay. So we've got one, two, three. Okay, so let's take a poll of Park Board members. We've got Dr. Woolery and Rayanne Foster.
I think...
Ray.
And Rayanne's administrative assistant.
And Amy's upstairs here right now.
But Amy doesn't count on our form.
No, I don't. Sorry. I'm here. She should be coming. And then Dr. Woolery is downstairs.
He's sitting, he's down here with us, making sure we're healthy.
So do we have a quorum here?
Um, we have, yes. So it's the two of us and...
Katie's.
Mm-hmm, and Danny just walked in. So we're waiting on Kevin to come to be our fifth. Unless there's somebody that they're... The board was gonna call in, but...
The ones that are audio-only are, don't count as a quorum. They can still vote, once we get a quorum.
So Kevin should...
Yeah, so once Kevin's here, I think we've got a quorum here. Sorry about that, folks. I was a little, um, I wasn't clear that, or I wasn't thinking, actually, that we need to make sure that the ones that joined remotely had video capability. So I did not do that, so, well, live and learn.
Mr. Thomas coming in?
Not...
What? Kevin? Grayson, what's his what?
Where did Benita go?
Basketball player. Basketball player. Yes.
Where did Benita go? Is she still on here, or...
Benita, you still there? I show your phone is being muted. There's go.
Can you hear me now?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Hi, Benita.
Hello.
We're, uh, we haven't taken roll yet. Just waiting for another Park Board member to come, okay?
Okay.
Benita, Benita.
Hi, Bob.
Hi, how you doing?
Hi, Tom. Okay.
All right.
Let's make it way for that too.
Hi, Megan.
She's in the bank. She was.
She's pretty sleek. You off your date, Benita?
I got off at 11:00, so I could make it to this meeting.
So you're working the drive-in? Drive-in only?
Drive-in only.
Yeah.
Do you have any money left?
Of course we have money. We're a bank.
Oh, that's right.
I hope they have the, like, public watching and see her and see everything they're doing.
This is closed. This is a closed meeting. You can't see from the outside.
So my staff at my office can see it now?
Can't.
They said they're seeing it right now.
Did you give them their password to get in?
I have no idea.
Good question. Mr. Shaw? This is what I thought. A question on my face, a Democrat about the curbside service.
I don't know if you guys can see me putting my thumb up, either.
It's on the website.
And it's got the password to get logged on.
They said there's no password. It's on the website.
It's the tail end number. It's on the login. It's an identifier for the program.
The other one said it's on Facebook.
Let's see, it is truly a public meeting because it's a public session.
Yeah, I just am trying to, I'm like, I feel like I'm going there.
Yeah.
Maybe be a little more professional.
Hey, you all do realize this is a public broadcast. Just a reminder.
Okay. Thank you.
So Roy says he can hear us, and he can't see, so he's in the same boat. And then what?
But he's got no camera.
Yeah.
You don't most have to do it from your phone, wouldn't you? Or laptop? Well...
If your laptop, like, my work laptop doesn't have a camera.
If something that has a camera, which... Phone would work. Yeah. iPad works. Sitting on my old... They're sitting there on a desktop with no camera on it there.
Yeah, yeah. And iPad works. That's why I'm surprised iPad has a camera.
I mean, iPad does work.
I don't know what Kevin's was at.
The old version doesn't work. The ones got that white connector on the bottom. They don't work anymore. The OS won't upgrade to get the version of this program running. But it does work. I ran one last night on an iPad at home. It worked. Quite a few meetings, and this is starting to happen. I've got one tomorrow. The Board of Directors for Oats, and it's a statewide deal. It's... We're using a different program. We use this. We're quite a bit. It's one that works really well.
And so we do a lot of the community center meetings.
Public meeting? Yeah.
But I can use my own, and it works. True. Just eats my battery like crazy.
The other thing we may run into is we have, using phones...
Okay, everybody, we have Mr. Thomas here, so we have a quorum present for the Park Board and as well as the council. So I will turn it over to Mayor Katie to call a roll for the council and then...
We're gonna call. We have two items on the agenda today. First item is conjunction with the Park Board.
Excuse me, Benita, a roll call, please, so we can capture it up here. Um, the two city clerks.
That's what I'm doing, Ann. I'm calling roll call.
Okay.
Now, roll call is the Park Department.
Okay, Jerry Case?
French, is it?
Oh.
Danny Manon.
Case, are you here?
Do you have to see me?
No, I cannot.
Present, yes.
Agen Simon?
He is not here. He's just by phone.
He's by phone?
Agen's absent.
Rayanne and Foster?
I lost one.
Okay, Christie, is she here?
No, she's not.
Dan Van Dyne, is he present?
Here. I'm here.
William Woolery? Roy Pointe here?
He's just on by phone.
Okay, and then Kevin Thomas?
Here.
Okay. And I will also do roll call for the City Council. Jeff Lehman?
Here.
Thomas Oldham?
Here.
Andrew Rossman?
Here.
Nadine Ash?
Here.
Charlie Low? Is he absent?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Bob Cross?
Here.
Holly Rowe?
He's absent?
Okay. Agen Page?
Is here.
We do have a quorum for both bodies. Is that correct?
Yes.
We'll proceed. I'm gonna turn the meeting over to our city administrator.
Okay, basically what we have, and I'm gonna ask Amy to jump in there whenever, as much as she needs to, but basically what we have is, is we opened last Thursday our bids for the pre-cast concrete, which is the concrete walls in the building essentially that will go around the swimming pool. And then also the pre-engineered metal building, which is the metal building that will cover the rest of the facility. The reason why we wanted to put these bids out early is so that they can do, they help us essentially design it and make all of the construction drawings fit together and get all of the footings and all of that kind of good stuff, that stuff that they need to do. So basically, for both of these contracts, there'll be about a 60-day window here. Will there be basically helping the architects design the buildings and making sure that it's buildable and that all the pieces are gonna fit together correctly. And so they'll work with the architects and then also our advisor, Dennis Paul, to help make sure that all of that stuff comes together. So we're not really gonna be out, basically, doing construction under these contracts just yet, but what it does is, and that's the reason for trying to get it in soon, and that's why we needed to meet now to keep that process going. I will tell you that the financing, because of this COVID deal, the financing has gotten delayed. The market basically, week before last, went up a point, over a point in three days. And so, um, right now, if we were to take this to market, we'd be paying 3.5% to 4% interest, and they're not sure that they could get it sold at that. So it's kind of a crapshoot if we took it to the market right now because it's taken really wild swings within one day. For example, one day it changed 50 basis points, so a half a percent. So what we've done in talking with our financial advisors is we're just gonna, we're just gonna kind of get this out there, get it all approved, get everything going, and then look for the right window. If that window happens, then we'll go ahead with the financing. So while normally I wouldn't bring you a contract and recommend that you approve a contract unless I had the money in the bank to pay for that, we're kind of in abnormal situations. So at this point, I'm still recommending that we go ahead and approve these contracts and knowing that if, worst-case scenario, that the market continues to go crazy on us and we can get this to begin, worst-case scenario, alls we'd have to do is pay them for what they've done, which is the design work that they're gonna help us do. I do not have those numbers. I don't know, Amy, if those have come in yet, but we're working on what those numbers are. But basically, alls I'm saying is, is we're not gonna get beyond what we can pay for as staff. What we are doing is recommending that we go ahead and approve the contracts so that when we get to that point, or if we can get to that point, then we can just go seamlessly and not lose our window.
And right now...
Part of the reason for trying to do this right now is the pre-cast certainly has a short window that they want to hit. And so what we were advised by our construction advisor is if we miss that window, then it will be significantly more expensive. He couldn't really put a number on it, but he did say it would be significantly more expensive. So I'm sorry, Amy, go ahead.
I just was gonna say from your comment, our first payment would be, is $40,000. It wouldn't be due until May 15th, and then our next payment of $40,000 would be due June 15th. I'm just to kind of give everybody a timeframe of when payments are starting and that. And then I'd also like to add that our bids did come in under, just right at 11%, so that's a good, a good thing as well for these bids to come in. So if we would have to rebid them out, they're gonna, it's gonna be much higher. And right now, we have a saving of our estimates of 11.5%.
Correct. Yeah, thank you, Amy. Neglected to say that. The good news is, the really good news is, is both of these came in significantly under budget, so...
And that was a big fear factor all along, the quorum. So next approach, uh...
Any discussion, Park Board, council?
How long was the bidding open?
Uh, three weeks, wasn't it, Amy?
Yeah, three weeks from our pre-bid meeting.
So when this agenda says that they were open March 19th, what is that in regards to?
So we opened the bids on Thursday, Megan, to the public.
I'm sorry, I may have answered differently. They were sent out with an RFP for about three weeks, ending March 19th. And so they had about three weeks to pull up their bids and accumulate it and put their bids in. They were due on the 19th, and then we had a public opening on the 19th. Does that answer your question?
So they came in, the actual bid was opened on the 19th?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for clarifying.
Welcome.
Do you wanna, you wanna talk to the companies that did the bids?
Uh, yes, both companies, the architect, well, let me take that back. Both companies, the, our Dennis Paul was very comfortable with. One of them, I can't remember which, Amy, but one of them, the architect had worked with and one they had not. But at the end of the conversation, all of the architects and construction manager, Dennis Paul, were quite comfortable with both of these firms. They believed that they, they, there is no reason to move off of the low bid. Both of them are the low bid, and they were quite comfortable with both of them. Did I miss anything, Amy?
Yeah, other than just both of these companies have done projects of this size. So yeah, that was our reason for moving forward with the low bid, is they're all qualified. They can always already meet our timeframe that we're wanting for moving forward this. So there's no reason for us to not go with the low bid.
I guess also, the steel building is a subsidiary company of Nucor that's providing the... We are getting a local flavor there. No, nobody's really actually local that would do the erection or the, put all the pieces together. But they are both very close. Let's see, catch me. Amy, do you remember where they're...
Pre-cast is on a Marshall's, just down the road.
And that's, you remember, we were in Kansas, and we visited a site where they're using that company.
Correct.
And everybody, please. Any other counsel? Park Board, any questions?
No. Honored, I call for the reading of the ordinance.
All right, please. Can you hear me, please?
Ann, your phone is muted. Do I need to go to a... Right now, Ann.
Okay, I'm sorry. Apparently, when I sent a message, it took me offline. I was just, I thought it might be helpful if you had the bid tab to show that on the screen to everybody. That's all. I was curious if you had that to show.
Um, yes, I think I do.
Because all we had at the time of the notice that went out was just what the proposed contract... There you go. Went out.
I need to figure out how to show pages here. Okay. I don't... I forgot how to show two pages at the same time, so... The one we're recommending here is for the metal building portion, is AJ Mueller Construction. They were, as you can see, the low bid. Their contract time was 63 days for the shop drawings and then 77 days from there to 154 days to completion. And we will... What is it, four? The concrete... Is the... Yeah. Is this one? Correct, Amy?
Uh, no, of course, I have the second one.
Yeah, there it is. Okay. Thank you.
So they again were the low bidder. They were, there is a $23,000 alternate, and that, gosh, I can't remember the conversation now, that was something to do with the material types or the materials. And everybody on the call was recommending that, so.
Call for the ordinance.
Arlene?
Okay, bill number 2020-47. An ordinance approving and accepting an agreement for pre-cast concrete for the Hecker Community Center project.
Second reading. Second.
Okay, bill number 2020-47. Ordinance approving and accepting an agreement for pre-cast concrete for the Hecker Community Center project.
Final passage.
Final passage, second.
Ross?
Ross, the call.
Okay, Rowe, he's absent. Page?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
So we have six yes and two absent.
Read the next ordinance.
Well, you want-
You want a part board to do the next, is that be appropriate?
Yes.
Okay, bill number- Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, Jerry Case?
Yes.
Russ Walters?
Yes.
Aiken Simon?
Absent.
So she's not even by here by phone?
No, she's absent, she's at work.
Okay, Rhanna Foster?
Yes.
And Dan Van Dyne?
Yes.
William Woolery?
Yes.
Roy Pointer? Kevin Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, and then is Kristy Woolery not here by phone?
Um, no, she's at work as well, she's absent.
Seven yes and two absent.
Okay, Arlene, next ordinance.
Okay, bill number 2020-48. An ordinance approving and accepting an agreement for pre-engineered building systems for the Hecker Community Center project.
Second reading.
Second.
On favor? Close?
Okay, bill number 2020-48. An ordinance approving and accepting an agreement for pre-engineered building systems for the Hecker Community Center project.
Final passage?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Rowe is absent, Page?
Yes.
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
Who is absent, and Cross?
Here.
Six absent.
Yes.
Russ Walters? Aiken Simon is absent, Rhanna Foster?
Yes.
Kristy Woolery is absent, Dan Van Dyne?
Yes.
Woolery?
He said yes.
Okay, Roy Pointer?
Saying yes, you can barely hear him.
I hear Roy Pointer.
He's saying yes.
He says yes, but you can't barely hear him.
Okay, and Kevin Thomas?
Yes.
Kevin, yes.
Thank you, that's the chair of the park. Thanks, Kevin, be safe.
Sorry for the technology issues, but I think we got through it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Tom and Megan Webb show.
Kevin?
Yes.
Part board deets to formally adjourn?
Yes. Man, hold up. Make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Yeah?
Okay, this is a roll call to adjourn, Jerry Case?
Yes.
Russ Walters? Simon is gone, Rhanna Foster?
Yes.
Woolery is absent, Van Dyne?
Yes.
William Woolery?
Yes.
Roy Pointer? And Kevin Thomas?
Yes.
Devin to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you guys.
So as you see, and there's a stranger in the corner, left-hand corner?
Take care, good to see y'all. Get this show on the road.
Okay, okay, Steve, did you have anything you wanted to share on your desktop? Or I can make you the presenter if you would like.
Uh, no, it would just be the, it would just be the email that we sent to the board of trustees.
Okay, yeah. So, carry on there. So, go ahead, Steve, you've got the floor.
Well, Lori joined us now again, but this is, we're planning for the worst, but hoping for the best. I think as you guys are watching the news, it's moving more towards the worst. But in order to do that, what we're looking to do is ask to borrow a line of credit against our accounts receivable, of which right now we have around $22 million worth of accounts receivable. But with us, probably this week, going to be stopping elective procedures, surgeries tomorrow, and things like that, which is the cash backbone of us, and 50% to 60% cancellation rates amongst our clinics this past week, and then also with our ER volumes being half of what they normally are, because everybody's afraid of getting out with the coronavirus. We're asking for a line of credit that we would use our local banks and use our AR as leverage against them. The total we're looking for right now is around 18 million. Lori and I, there are things that changes every day. Lori and I sat in on a conference call with the, that MHA put on with Senator Blunt and Senator Holliday, and they are looking at maybe doing a bailout practice, because everybody's hit with the same thing. All the hospitals in the state were on the call, and that was the main thing. Look, we can't go 30, 40 days with that, with this, with our cash situation. So CMS is looking to put something together, but they think it's probably gonna be at least 45 days out. So meantime, we want to borrow against our AR. The other thing is, some of the insurance companies, United and Anthem, we don't do a lot with Anthem, they are, they have asked their employees to work from home, and they have stated that it's going to take, instead of two to three weeks to pay, it's gonna take two to three months to pay their claims. So that's why we need to act now.
Yeah, if I could add to that, you know, part of this is, is, you know, making sure that we can cover payroll and keep, you know, keep the payroll covered, which is, you know, for the hospital is a significant portion of their total expenditures, and therefore a significant portion of their cash flow. And, you know, you can stretch vendors out, but you really can't stretch payroll out. And so really at this point, the, alls we're asking for or recommending is that council have a, I guess consensus that, to authorize staff to go out and put together the documents. They would, for formal approval, would have to bring the documents back and the specifics of the deal. But, so, we would like to be able to authorize them to be able to go out and do that, though, so that if it does come back and they put together a deal that we don't catch council off guard, or we bring together a deal that council really has no interest in doing. So that's kind of what we're looking at at this point.
So what we're really doing is trying to get a consensus of the council members?
And this would be a revolving line, so again, they would only make draws if they needed to, and then pay down as they can, so.
Is there any chance that opening that line of credit would disqualify us from any type of bailout, state or federal level?
Do you hear that, Steve?
We did not hear, we did not hear the question.
Yeah.
Is there any chance that opening this line of credit would disqualify us for bailout on the state or federal level?
No, not at this time. Everybody understands that, you know, while we're financially strapped for cash, there's several hospitals that are worse than us, and they know that if we were to, we're not able to do this, they'd be, we'd have to shut our doors right in the middle of the crisis and not be able to make payroll then. So today, what they talked about was, you know, giving us, kind of forgiving it. There's a, it seems awful light to me, but about a $100 billion bill out there just for lost revenue. But I don't think that that, I don't think that that is going to even scratch the surface. Lori's apologies, but she has to go to the county command center. They're getting ready to set up their command center, so she is going to that today.
Hey, Steve, one question, or maybe a two-part one. For one, if you go ahead and do this, part of the agreement, I think, should be, there should be no prepayment penalty. And if indeed it is wiped, that there's no penalty against anybody in regards to this, if that does come back and they're able to just forgive it.
Correct, and I'm sure, I'm sure that'll probably, that will be in the documents. We've already talked to a couple of the local banks here in town, and they're very supportive, but they say we need to move, we need to move quicker rather than, or rather than later.
Your honor, I'll make a motion, if it needs to be a motion, to proceed with this procedure.
Okay.
This is not an official ordinance or document. We're getting a consensus, so we can, we can get everybody, Bob Cross? Andrew Dawson? Anita?
Yes.
Tom Oldham?
We're good.
Aiken Page?
Yes.
Jeff Lehman?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, thank you for coming, Steve, thank you.
All right, thank you all very much. We appreciate everything y'all do for us, so.
Thanks, Steve.
Right, thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I guess before we adjourn, Arlene and Ann, are you guys okay with what we need to have in the minutes? Do we need to have anybody say anything about, you know, the special circumstances and all of that to get it reflected in the minutes?
Uh, yeah, let me give that a go. First of all, as you know, the last item of business from the hospital just arose after the agenda was published, initially published on Friday at noon, so that constituted an emergency. All the technology to make the meeting happen remotely to prevent all of this was all caused by this horrible virus, so that allows us to deviate from our normal sunshine law requirement. So I think that gets it covered. If there's anything else anybody else would like to add, please feel free.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, Ann. So, have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Bye-bye. How have I turned this off? Do I leave this running?